Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, then click on View Agenda.
Morning everyone, if you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our inspirational word for the day, be careful how you think, your life is shaped by your thoughts. And this morning, Commissioner Kokowski has the dog.
Great looking dog, too.
I don't really understand what you're saying. I heard something. You said your life is shaped by your thoughts.
By your thoughts, I know.
You think I'm your mom, don't you? Look at you.
Thinking of that X-ray picture.
Your life, not your body.
We have a sweet little, come here, get all tangled up here, Australian, or not Australian shepherd, German shepherd mix, lot of energy, very cute, nice markings, come here. Very friendly, she makes somebody a great pet, so you need to come and get her, she's available today for adoption. Come here. If you don't want a puppy, you want an older dog, we have lots of dogs, thirty, come here, you. Come here. Except, she doesn't like to leash so much. Okay, check us out on Facebook, you can see all the dogs that we have available, and just remember to adopt, don't shop. She's got lots of energy.
Madam Clerk, this morning before I think we get started with business, I know that Solid Waste is here to give us an update, and Tiffany, if you'd like to give us an update this morning from our Solid Waste Department.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I brought with me Bob Shantz with Barnes Nursery. Just a refresher, that we were very fortunate, Ohio EPA awarded us the 2016 Market Development Grant, so Barnes Nursery was awarded, a total grant award of $66,538 to go forward with their purchase of two trucks.
For food waste recycling, food waste collection.
Here in Lorraine County, so I just wanted to do a quick overview of that, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to Bob.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for your time. Like Tiffany said, there's an investment with the Ohio EPA putting in $66,500, as well as Barnes putting in $66,500, and it's for the purchase of two trucks. We, as we built this proposal, we talked with businesses and universities in Lorraine County, and as we speak, we have a, we're getting a tour of Overland College, we're gonna start that in the month of September, collecting their food waste for recycling. We make it into compost and soil products, and are always looking for closed-loop opportunities. Overland College is one of those, where they actually buy back the soils and use them on their facilities. But we also have been collecting food waste from Bendex, and we have other businesses that we have proposals out to, so this is an immediate, customers have been asking for it in your county, and we're providing that service with this equipment.
Beautiful. Now, are you reaching out to our restaurants?
Yes, yeah. We sort of look at, like, we're looking for anchor customers, and then we just build around that, and we build routes.
Okay, things that are close to larger customers.
Yes.
Wonderful, love the organic part of it.
And this is a pass for grants, so the district doesn't have money invested in this, this is strictly state.
Yeah, these are good grants, doesn't require any local dollars. Solid Waste Department did a real good job partnering, Barnes has been a good partner, we've had other workings with your organizations, so it's always been a really great partnership to bring dollars back to Lorraine County. Good job on the Solid Waste Department, Tiffany and Keith and company.
Oh, and, excuse me, and that, this is the third time I've wrote a grant, or helped write a grant and got it, and I've worked with three different counties, and I have to say that working with Lorraine County Solid Waste, they've been the most efficient and just made it, walked me through it very easily.
Well, that's always perfect to hear. You hear that Brad? You know, you can quote that.
Tiffany, how much did you pay him to say that?
But we do work hard.
So who ends up driving the two trucks?
Employees, and we're hiring people, we have ads out on, and I'm using some veterans to get it started, and then we're going to be putting some newer people in to drive it.
Two new jobs, huh?
Yeah. The original proposal was going to be two.
Right. Two new jobs, yes.
Hey, look forward to working together again in the future, there's gonna be more opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so this doesn't require action today?
No, it doesn't really require any action, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of the work that was being done, and we can just move on.
Nice job, Tiff.
Madam Clerk, go back to the agenda.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Preparations.
So move.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Hey, go ahead, I'll second, go ahead.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Transfers.
So move.
He said second.
I said second. It should be one of the days.
I was just waiting, you know.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
New advances, various payments requisitions.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Airport Approved Modification 1 and 2 to Richland Engineering Limited, Mansfield, in total amount of $105,631 for engineering services at the airport to provide ongoing construction services, construction observations, construction administration, and record drawings for rehab taxi BEs. This is a 95% reimbursable grant, local interest, $5,281.
Administrator Cordez.
Well, there's some additional funding, which is always nice. It, I can't miss an opportunity to remind people that we were required to keep the airport open. This is a little bit more of the Kool-Aid that if you drink it, you owe them for twenty years, I always want to advise you that every time we accept FAA dollars, but the work still has to be done out there. You don't take these dollars, you've still gotta do the work. A lot of folks that I talk to, they just really have a lot of heartburn about the airport. I'm not down on the airport, some people think I am, it's just, it really is, it's challenging to explain to the taxpayers when we're so short of funds, and they go out there and they don't understand the financing, and where all the money comes from, that we have a limited amount of money that we put in locally into that airport. So if I'm repetitive and I keep talking about it, I apologize, but I really, I really think it needs to be talked about a lot. For a few thousand dollars, we're bringing back a lot more federal dollars to the airport, and of course, the work will be done by people in Lorraine County, hopefully when the bids go out, and so that keeps people working, too.
Need to make a motion.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Administrator Cordez.
Well, I passed the sheet, I think Mr. Kayla was waiting on a stalk today, so I yield on needing any executive session, and we can talk about some issues next week. I passed the sheet, if you just want to pass a resolution on it, that'd be fine.
So move.
Motion for Personnel Summary Sheet.
Second.
Any further discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Advertising, we have the reading of the minutes, August 17th.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Advertising notice for bidders for courthouse Phase One Site Development Package, estimated cost of Phase One is $370,000. Notice being the Chronicle on August 29th and September 5th, mandatory pre-bid meeting at 9:00 AM on September 6th at the site, and open at 2:00 PM on September 15th.
Administrator Cordez.
Well, it's begun.
It's begun, that's good.
A lot of prep work, a lot of changes, there's gonna be probably about an eighteen to two-year period, they think it's gonna be less than eighteen months, I really think it's going to be a little bit more than that, given the logistics of the building. We're gonna make the move here soon, we're moving all of the people and all their assorted support mechanisms, computers, desks, chairs, everything, and even though it's just going a block away, it's still quite an event to seamlessly move them and close one building, open another, and be ready to go in the same day. I want to tell you that it's, things with the Adult Probation Department, the courts have settled in, we seem to have a good handle on what's going on, and a cooperative coalition. I'm pleased with that, sometimes our relationship has been a little tense, and I'd like to point out when it's going well. It's gonna require everybody to be really patient with this whole thing, and I will tell you that we also have to close off and fence off the whole courthouse, so might as well tell the public now, because we're gonna have construction fence around the whole perimeter of that, and we're gonna be working, we're gonna have Court Street closed for a couple days, so we can repave all of Court Street in front of the Justice Center, that's gonna be part of all of that first work. We're doing that in conjunction with the City of Alariah, as you know, they're redoing Third Street, and they're taking the turning lane out, so we're gonna push out, we're gonna do the sidewalks, we're gonna push all that out. We were gonna do that anyway, they were gonna do it anyway, so we got some cooperation on how to do all of that, we're gonna put wider sidewalks in over there.
So everything lines up.
So everything, everything lines up straight down the street, it's gonna be a really nice streetscape. We're gonna change out some of the lights, put the ones that the city uses, so we have a nice view, that's, you know, similar, and same thing with the trees going down the road. Alariah has promised to use our pedestals, because we installed new ones just last year on the side of this building, and of course, the ones at the Justice Center are a few years old. These lights on the side of this building are on our grid, our electric, our transformer, but everything else is on the city grid, still doesn't make any sense not to deal with them on the lights down here. It's really starting to look real fine in the downtown area, and we're gonna complete that picture with doing this work on the courthouse. One of the things I do want to tell you, you asked Commissioner Kokowski about a bit of a wall behind that area where we were gonna have seating, promenade for lack of another term, we're working on reusing the stairs, the sandstone stairs, that we're taking out of the courthouse to preserve, because we have to take those back stairs out, there was some concern, because it really changes a little bit of the back of the building, so we're gonna try to repurpose the sandstone we're taking out and use it in that area, to kind of pull it all in. So, I just give you a brief update on that, because I know you had to ask about the lights and stuff back there. So, people are gonna have to be patient with us, a lot of changes coming.
And those stairs have been reworked in the past?
They have been reworked in the past, but we're gonna preserve the sandstone and use it in the project elsewhere. That helps, especially with the historical people, they've been really good to work with, once they came in and they understood the dynamics of what we were dealing with, the small extension on the back, they seemed to appreciate how we incorporated that into the look of the courthouse more fully. They had a conceptual idea that would have, it could have worked if we didn't have a problem inside the building. Wasn't the outside that was a problem installing, it was the inside, given where the walls are, and you can't move those sandstone walls in there, they're very thick and they're the support mechanism. The biggest work is putting the third floor, finishing all that third floor, and reinstalling a whole new third floor. That's the biggest piece, and that required us to put a fire suppression system in, which, you know, added a substantial amount of cost to the project. But once you do that kind of modification, you have to, not that the building isn't up to code, but there's newer codes, depending on how much renovation you do, you have to move through the newer codes if a percentage of floor space is disturbed. Once you decided that we needed to complete out that third floor, and I think I've told you, the courts have informed me that, you know, there may be a move by the state to go out of the parole business, which, if it's much like the pre-sentencing, may be something that's pushed down onto the counties, the local governments, to pick up some of that responsibility, so that space may be full before it's even built. So I think you made a good decision on that, if not for the present day, for the future. So, it all begins, please be patient, I expect several unthought-of things to occur as we do this.
What's the goal, to get the probation office over to Broad Street right now?
I'm hoping for about the second week of September, we're working on that. We finished the roof over there, so, again, so folks out there know what we're doing, instead of trying to rent space lots of places, we received the building through the tax law closure at no cost, and then we've put some money into updating the building, roof, repaired the HVAC, so we'll get our money back out of that, and then once the adult probation is done using that building, we've had some thoughts on other county departments that'll be going into that building. So that really preserved our funding to make sure that we had an asset going forward.
So it'll free up a lot of the parking for now, so we can redo the streetscape?
It's probably not gonna be any parking over there for a while. Remember, we're putting the construction fence down, once we redo Court Street, there'll be, the parking off of Court Street that belongs to Alariah, we're working with them right now to obtain that parking as part of the project, and they've seemed to be willing partners, and Jerry had a conversation, I believe, with the law director there, and you know, to start moving and doing that, but even though those street people, they're not really on the street, they're recessed a bit, because if you know where the easement is there, but we're gonna have construction vehicles coming in and out of that fenced area there, because that's, that whole parking lot's where we're gonna stage the construction folks out of. So I don't think there's gonna be any parking over there at all, which is gonna be a little problematic for the public, and of course, when we do Court Street, I have to deal with the church there, because they have their daycare and their school there, and they use that out, it's always full there, so I gotta redo the traffic through our back parking lots. I'm working on a plan now, it's not something that can't be accomplished, it's gonna take some time and effort and get the word out, so I hope to have that plan finished up in about the next week to ten days, go over to church, so they can start talking to their folks. Only a few days of inconvenience, but it's an inconvenience nonetheless. Biggest inconvenience is gonna be for the public, there's not gonna be, there's gonna be very limited public parking in front of the Justice Center, and then you're gonna have a lot of construction vehicles there, and even the bit of parking that is still there, I will tell you, no matter how much we try, we're gonna have construction workers parking in those spots. We know from when we did the Justice Center, much as we asked them not to park in the public spots, they get there early and they filled up the lots. So that's gonna really even make it worse downtown around the Justice Center and the county building. I'm not sure how to deal with that, because it's a public parking lot, and they are public, whether they're down here to work or not, they are public. And I couldn't tell you, you know, a construction worker from a guy coming in to pay his tax bill when they pull into the lot, so even if we monitored the lot, it's gonna be challenging, it's gonna be tough, so people should plan on that, they should plan on a reduced amount of availability of parking, it'll be more significant when we get into Phase Two of the project, so they should give themselves some ample time.
It's a nice challenge to have, I think that, I want to thank you for all the time and effort you've been putting into it, and certainly want to thank the judges for working with us on this. I want to thank my colleagues, too, for being very supportive, making this possible, it's important that we preserve the most important, I think, historic landmark in the county that we certainly identify with, but it's more than just preserving the building, it's actually giving it a functional governmental use, and I think that certainly justifies the investment that we're making. It's great for the downtown, it's certainly the signature piece for the square.
When it's done, I anticipate that people look at the building in a whole new light, and that's a pun, because when all of the landscaping that's around the building now, that's really not in good condition, is always, I think, crippled the look of the building, when that's all taken down and everything's re-sculptured, there's two monuments there, we know that the workers monument is there, but few people know that there's a World War II monument on the other side of the courthouse, it's very neglected, doesn't get much respect. Those things are gonna be, as I showed you the plans, re-sculptured, there's gonna be some meditation bench there, the whole building's gonna be uplit, and the balconies are gonna be uplit, the front of the building is gonna be redone, anything that wasn't original is gonna be taken out, the stairs are gonna be redone, the building's gonna be scrubbed, cleaned, we haven't done that in fifteen years, and I think the whole look is just gonna pop off of Eli Square right into the front of the courthouse, and people are gonna see a whole new look that I think that's been missing from the courthouse.
Yeah, I was quite concerned that one member of this board in the past had talked about making it into a homeless shelter, it talked about possibly destroying the building, crazy talk, but thank goodness, we're doing something productive and beneficial for the whole community and actually putting the building to use. Any other comments?
So, I'll move that we advertise notice to bidders for the courthouse.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Thank you, too.
Man, it's been a long time working on these ditch brands, that's a big one there.
Well, you know, maybe you want to explain what we're doing, because, you know, we don't do enough of that, I don't think, and I know you're in a hurry, but this project has been a very frustrating one, almost as frustrating as trying to get a small piece of storm drain over on Grafton Road, which is probably the longest project in the history of mankind to get, shortest piece of pipe fixed. But remember, when we bought the property, somebody had logged it out, it turned into wetlands, so we couldn't go back there and put the retention basins in that we planned on. We renegotiated the price of the land, because it had less value, because it was not able to be a detention, excuse me, I said retention, detention area, so we filed for a grant to basically do stream restoration, and that stream restoration will result in a retention area that'll slow the flow of water going into Shettfield Township. Hopefully, the fire station won't flood after this, and there's some properties back in there, and hopefully this gives some relief to the City of Lorraine. Now, we haven't partnered with the City of Lorraine on the cost of this, because we're not holding back as much water, our original idea was, and the city showed a willingness, because we could hold back so much water on the detention project, that they would partner economically with us. I have not re-approached them, because I really can't guarantee how much water we're gonna hold back. I know we're gonna hold back enough to deal with Shettfield Township's problem, we're looking for other property, I don't really want to talk much about it, because we're in the acquisition phase, but there could be a Phase Two to this that will alleviate some of that flooding down on...
East 36th Street.
Right, down in that area, down there, but, you know, Solid Waste, excuse me, Community Development deserves a lot of credit, Don Romancik and his folks, the Stormwater District, because we didn't give up on this project, we just rethought how we could do something and applied for different dollars, and remember, when we were doing the detention, it was 100% our dollars. Now that we're doing the retention through stream restoration, we're bringing outside dollars into the project, so we got some grant money for this from outside, so...
Good amount of money.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a good project, and you're right, I'm glad it's underway, too, because there's been too many setbacks on this, so it's nice to be moving forward.
Wonderful. Nice job, Don.
And the total project is not the 295, I called them last, or yesterday, it seemed like, oh, 295,000, and it's 234 for the consultant services, the project's over a million, correct?
It's gonna end up being over a million dollars. People don't realize how expensive preventing flooding is, it's very expensive, and it's a, out of the township's, a very emotional issue, too, with how these things are dealt with. One of our greatest successes has been the Stormwater, the Stormwater District, as you know, we have several long-range multimillion-dollar projects that we're doing in phases over time now, that are gonna benefit the community. I'm still waiting for that collaborative project with one of the cities, we thought this was gonna be the one, and when we get the other land, we'll go back and talk to them again.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
War Contracted Concrete and More Inc., Avon Lake, in the amount of $4,400, which includes a contingency for the North Bridgeville ADA Walkway Phase Two Project. Two bids were received on April 22nd, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed on or before August 25th, and plead on or before October 31st. Authorized Administrator to notify the order to release retained as a condition of project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski. Aye.
War Contracted Concrete and More Inc., Avon Lake, in the amount of $4,400, which includes contingencies for any unforeseen changes, for Sally Zimmerman at 241 Morewood, Avon Lake, to receive grant assistance for storm, sanitary lateral separation, and be paid from Ohio Trust Fund account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski. Aye.
Under Job and Family Authorized Purchase Service Agreement with El Central, Lorraine for Business English and Work Experience Program for TANF participants for fiscal state, or federal fiscal year 17, in the amount of $26,234.29, effective October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2017. Authorized Director to execute in behalf of Court of Prosecutors' approval as to form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski. Aye.
Authorized Various Purchase and Service Agreements for Title 20, Social Service Block Grant Fund Services for Federal Fiscal Year 17, effective October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2017. Authorized Director to execute in behalf of Court of Prosecutors' approvals to form one, Lorraine County Town and Family Council to provide case management in the amount of $78,278, and Neighborhood Alliance Alariah for Emergency Shelter Service in the amount of $50,000.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Men Resolution 16255 adopted April 27, 2016. Authorizing Purchase Service Agreement with Boys and Girls Club for Summer Camp for Low-Income Children Using TANF Funds, effective retroactive July 1st, 2016 through August 12, 2016. Amendments to reflect an increase of $102,375 for 500 campers. Contract amount of $511,875, and authorized Director to execute in behalf of Court of Prosecutors' approvals to form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Men Resolution 16276 adopted May 4, 2016. Authorizing Purchase Service Agreement with Common Ground, the Cindy Nord Center for Renewal Overland for Summer Camp for Low-Income Children Using TANF Funds, effective retroactive June 20, 2016 through July 29, 2016. Amendments to reflect a decrease in the amount of $19,000, contract amount of $14,000 for a decrease of 50 campers, and authorized Director to execute in behalf of Court of Prosecutors' approvals to form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski. Aye.
Authorized Purchase Service Agreement with Common Ground, Overland, in the amount of $163,137, to provide personal development training classes to TANF and FATE recipients in federal fiscal year 17, effective October 1st, 2016 through September 30, 2017, and authorized Director to execute in behalf of Court of Prosecutors' approvals to form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Mr. Cordez. Mr. Cordez?
I have no further comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
No report this morning.
Oh, boy.
Commissioners' report.
Well, Thursday, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. We had a couple of zoning issues, one in Eaton Township and one in Amherst Township. Saturday, I attended an event for Ron Nabokowski, our Clerk of Courts, who passed away earlier this year. I want to thank the guys from Labor who did a great job of cooking the steaks. They were really good. I brought my own knife, like I always do, and I barely even needed it.
Such a smart thing to do.
I know, I always do.
Bring your own knife.
Bill Flynn taught me that. Remember Councilman Flynn?
Oh, geez.
Oh, yeah.
Red.
Red Flynn. Then I headed out to Sheffield Village for a Fine Arts Festival held by True North Cultural Arts. Met a really, a lot of really nice people and great music and, and arts of all, all different types. And then wanted to let people know, tomorrow, August 25th, is Operation Street Smart. It's an, an adult drug education program. It's going to be 7:00 to 9:00 tomorrow evening at the Lorraine County Community College Stocker Arts Center. It's a free event, and it's put on by the Sheriff's Department and the Lorraine County Drug Task Force. Then also, save the date for September the 8th for the Agricultural Tire Collection, which is going to be September the 8th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's at our Lorraine County Collection Center, which is at 540 South Abbey Road in Elyria. You do have to register for the event. Call ahead of time, let them know what you're going to be bringing. It's one, the phone number is 1-800-449-5463, or 440-328-2368. And I'll give this to Hal, so he can put this up on the screen for you. So if you have any agricultural tires, head out to our collection center for that event.
What's the date on that?
It is September the 8th.
Okay. I'm hoping that the next one will be out in Grafton.
At our new.
You know, we're working with them on the Regional Tire Collection at the Town Hall there. So maybe just because the work isn't going to be completed, that it's still up here, but I think it'd be much more convenient for the folks that are bringing agricultural tires if we use the site in Grafton.
Really?
Thank you.
I will have all this, because there's a lot of information on here, so I'll just have Hal put this up on the screen for those of you watching this by television. End of my report.
Wonderful. Yeah, busy week. Fundraisers, steak fries, again, a nice turnout for the benefit of Ron Nabokowski's family. But this week, I chaired the meeting. Keep Lorraine County Beautiful was hosted. It was held at the Palace Civic Center in downtown Lorraine. As always, Kurt Hernan and the people from the Palace do a good job presenting and showing off one of the jewel of downtown. A lot of discussion about the upcoming plantings and the flowers, re-harvesting bees. So that'll be kicking off. What else did we have this week? I'm trying to look through my calendar, because I didn't write it down. See, Nabbies. Oh, happy birthday to Joe Kazur. They had a surprise birthday party for Joe Kazur on Sunday. He was 70, so.
Still kicking it over there.
Joe's turned 70, correct.
Still won't get out of the game, huh?
Still won't get out of the game. Some of them old timers, you know, they're primed away.
He's got like 62 years in PRS. I think he started as a child, didn't he?
(laughing).
Happy birthday, Joe.
Yeah. And when we finish, I'll be taking off, because they're inducing my daughter Nicole today. I have a granddaughter due shortly.
So what is it, the 27th one for you?
The sixth. This is number six.
Ah.
End of my report.
Just want to commend all the organizers who put together a voter registration awareness gathering at the Greater Christ Temple here in Elyria. I was asked to go over there and speak, and I just can't stress enough the importance of not only registering to vote, but actually voting. Trying to remind people of all the folks during the whole Civil Rights Movement who worked so hard for everybody's right to vote. Unfortunately, some people losing their lives just for simply going out to try to register voters. So I think I'd respect and honor to them. Should always remember the importance of the people who came before us, so that you can actually vote today. And of course, we had the recent anniversary of the women's right to vote, coming up on almost 100 years. Hard to believe. There was a period in time where women couldn't vote. What was that all about?
I don't know.
Yeah, it was crazy, wasn't it?
Look at us now, going to be president.
Yeah, there you go. Exactly. So, also, thank you to all the organizers. I know Joe Kazur, Labor, a number of organizers, put together Ron Nabokowski's Memorial Steak